Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us for tonight's Selectman Meeting, May 9, 2022. We will start off with roll call, please. Selectman O’Connell here.
Garrett DePalmer here.
Greg Bendel here.
Kevin Kyra here.
And Lil William Maselli here. If you could all please stand with and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we’re going to start off with the transmitting of Treasury Warrants, number 44, 44A, 45, 45A, and 202245. Do you have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? You need MSO moved. There are no approval of minutes, and that will bring us into appointments. Our first one this evening is Patrick Giraud, Chairman of Fourth of July Committee, to request to use Town Common in Swain Green for the annual Fourth of July festivities. Welcome, Patrick. Good to see you.
Thank you, Lil. Nice to see you all. Hi, everyone. So this year, the Wilmington Fourth of July Celebration is pleased to announce the return of our fortieth celebration. This year, the events are slated for Thursday, June 30 through Sunday, July 3. And the 26th Annual Family Day will take place on Saturday, July 2. Our big night dedicated to veterans and service members, which will include the big firework display, will be held on July 3. That’s the Sunday with the rain date of Monday, July 4. We are very excited this year to bring back the Family Day fireworks. That will occur on the Family Day, which is Saturday, July 2. So the Family Day fireworks are a much smaller show, so they do not result in the closure of Wildwood Street and the Wildwood Cemetery, such as the Big Night fireworks, which have larger shells. So those traditionally shut down those areas. The committee is in full swing right now with planning. We’ve had a lot of meetings throughout town with various department heads and a lot of different constituents in town. I think one of the most exciting things is the return of our food court, which a lot of the nonprofits and the various community groups in town benefit from. The last couple of years with COVID has certainly been difficult. We haven’t been able to present the celebration, and as a result, a lot of those community groups took a hit. They rely tremendously on the Fourth of July for a lot of their fundraising endeavors through much of what they’re able to accomplish during the Fourth of July. So that’s pretty much the event this year. We are going to be releasing the schedule in the next week or so. The schedule will look pretty similar to the past couple of years. We are adding a few new elements this year, such as an antique car show. We figured antique cars, muscle cars, that goes along with the whole, you know, America theme, so we are very excited to debut that. And we’re also going to be making a return of our Firecracker 5K and Family Fun Run. So we have a couple of our large signature events, as well as a lot of the smaller traditional events with live music on the common every single evening. We also have a couple of community groups that will be presenting meals on the common. More details to come in the next couple of weeks when the schedule is released. Part of tonight’s request, in addition to requesting the common, is to also ask the Board pursuant to its authority set forth in Section 5A and 5J of the Town of Wilmington Rules and Regulations for hawkers, peddlers, and transient vendors, we’d like to impose a restriction to prohibit hawkers, peddlers, and transient vendors within a half-mile radius on those dates. So Saturday, or I’m sorry, Thursday, June 30 through Monday, July 4, if there’s the rain date on the 3. So, you know, we’re looking to basically ask the Board to consider putting a restriction on those different types of vendors, so they don’t impede with the various groups that we have on the common that are looking to do some fundraising. Happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you, Patrick. I’m so excited. I’m sure everybody in Wilmington is. So I just want to say thank you and to, you know, to your Board and everybody that’s put in the effort. So we’re just so excited to have it all back.
Thank you.
So thank you. I’ll open it up to...
Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you. It’s good to be back. It’s been a couple of years.
We’re all excited about it.
Yeah.
We’ve missed it. I think the town has missed it. And just looking forward, can’t come fast enough.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would just say thank you again, just the fact that you’ve taken the leadership role. I know it’s had a longstanding tradition under a prior director, and you’ve taken that on full steam, so it certainly is appreciated. It’s a time where not everybody’s local. Some people like to go away, and the fact that you’ve, you know, chosen to spend that time here in town and then work collectively with your team and all the affiliates within the town, you know, as a cohesive team to bring this together is certainly appreciated. I echo what Selectman DePalmer said, that it’s been missed, and understandably so. I think it’ll be great, and I can’t say enough how complimentary I am of all the work that you’ve done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Patrick, thank you so much for being here and all the hard work you’ve put in. Obviously, you know, all of us here know how much work goes into this, a year-round preparation for the big week in July, and not just, you know, a few meetings before prior to that. So thank you and your committee for all the hard work you’ve done and the hard work you continue to do to get ready. And obviously, as has been said by my colleagues here, it’s the highlight of the summer. Everyone’s looking forward to it, and it’s going to be extra special this year, given that we missed out on. And sometimes you don’t know what you have until it’s gone type of thing, right? So we’ve really missed it, and we’re excited for it. So thanks for all your hard work.
Great, thank you.
It’s all been said. Really, congratulations on you first getting the chairmanship, whether you take it as congratulations or not, with all the, with everything that goes along with it. But you’re following in some big footsteps with, I think Jim Stewart was the first, and then Scott Durant, and now you. So that’s pretty good stuff. And I want to thank you and for taking on this mantle of leadership and your committee for putting this together. The town is extremely excited, looking forward to it, as well as all the groups and organizations that you touch by this event that help them raise funds for their charitable endeavors as well. So thank you for what you’re doing, and let’s hope it doesn’t rain.
I’m going with. Thank you.
I think it’s all been said. It’s an incredible tradition that has unfortunately run into a bit of a roadblock the last couple of years, but your leadership and the many that are kind of offstage, we are looking forward to a good event.
Great, thank you, and thank you for all your help.
Well, with that said, I’ll entertain a motion.
Two separate ones.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah. I’ll make a motion to grant the request of the use of the Town Common in Swain Green for the annual Fourth of July festivities.
Second.
In favor? Okay. And then do I have a motion to restrict hawkers, peddlers, and transient vendors within a half-mile of our Town Common through the dates of June 30 to September 4, which includes, I’m sorry, September, July 4, covering potential rain date?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I’ll second that.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, so moved. And Patrick, also while you’re here, I’d like to bring up number 11 on our agenda, the Board to consider issuing a Sunday entertainment license to cushioned amusements in conjunction with Fourth of July celebration, so we can get that all done in one.
Move to grant the request.
I’ll second.
Okay. All in favor? Any discussion? Good. All right, so moved.
One thing, Madam Chair, is based on the restriction that we put on there, I know that we have some ice cream vendors and whatnot. I know there’s a very small list. Jeff, would that be something that maybe we could proactively reach out to people and let them know, like, I think it’s Tony, that’s the ice cream man, so that he, you know, just give a courtesy so that he’s not turned away?
I think we can. I think from what I understand, it’s more often than not, it’s from, it’s not vendors that we, that are local, it’s out of town.
Okay, okay. It was more just a courtesy, and then if there was anything, like, from a website perspective, if we post the Fourth of July, maybe we put that as a footnote so that we’re getting the word out to deter people from coming.
We can certainly do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
See you in a few weeks.
All right. Take care. Okay, next on our appointments, we would like to recognize Priscilla Ward as a member of the Board of Registers. Registers.
Wherever you want.
You all celebrated believing thirty years ago, so this is a surprise. Who made that happen? I’m going with the registrar. Thanks for years. Well, we want to thank you for your decades of service. It just speaks volumes. I apologize, I don’t know you personally, and I wish we had time to get to know each other, but... I’m in and out all the time. All right, all right. But I’ve heard wonderful things from my colleagues here, and I just want to thank you. You’re a shining example of, you know, people doing good things in this town, so thank you. It’s been fun.
Kevin, you want to start?
I’ll start with you this time.
Yeah, sure.
As long as he’s not his brother.
No, no. I can’t speak as eloquent as he, but...
Mike clearly roasted me when I did retire.
I won’t go there. I’ll just thank you for your years of dedication and to the town, to the residents of Wilmington. I mean, what can you say to a person who volunteers, you know, all this, all these many years? In addition to being the clerk of the courts, the town clerk here, but just, you know, on behalf of myself personally, thank you for your friendship and your guidance, and thank you for the town, for what you do, and you’re certainly be missed, for sure. And I’m sure that maybe Beth will call on you every once in a while for some advice. There you go. It’s on speed dial.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. I too, you know, really enjoyed, you know, anytime we’ve interacted, it’s always been, you know, so pleasant, and I really appreciate that. I feel like everybody, when you go to vote, and everybody’s so pleasant, and I think that’s led by your example. I think people feed off your positive energy, and you’ve always kept us in line. I know there was a few times Kevin tried to go and vote for me twice, and I appreciate that. But you kept him in line, so thanks for all that, and thanks so much for your many years of service, and we wish you the very best in your retirement.
It was a joy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You’re welcome, sir.
Having someone volunteer for the town, and today, it’s hot. But if they look and see what people like yourself have done in support of the town, I believe we would be able to have more participation. But I want to thank you very much. I don’t know you personally, but every time I’ve gone in to vote or been involved with voting at all, it’s always your smiling face, no matter what it was, that we’d see, and I want to thank you very much.
So I obviously am going last, and a lot of the kind words have already been said, but I can’t express to you the amount of respect that I have for you. You have had a legacy in this town from being a town clerk, and I think it’s one of the most critical departments in the town. I remember as a youth seeing my birth certificate, and I believe your name is attached to it going back, and that’s in the 70s. And just to now be part of the whole voting process and just the importance of voting and being part of that civic process, and that is a, all the wonderful things that go on here in Wilmington as it relates to that area of business is a direct reflection of all of your work and effort. Your family has a legacy in this town. You have a legacy in this town. Ward is a household name.
I was born here. I didn’t get to read.
And so there’s many, many, many generations and people that speak of you so highly, speak of your family so highly, and I’m certainly one of those people. So I’m thrilled that you were invited to come in here tonight and that you can be publicly recognized in this room and with people at home, so that this is your night to shine and really be acknowledged and praised to spend that many, those many years, you know, however many years, was it 45, 40? I mean, I...
Elections, yeah.
That’s almost my age. So that just puts it in perspective, you know, for me. So thank you very much for all of your years of service, and I wish you the very best, and...
You’re doing it. It’s just that I think it’s time for some of these younger, more with the computers and type of thing to get active. We all thought it was yours. It was a joy.
Well, I would just ask, you know, 45 years ago, where were a lot of folks here, if you were here at all? That’s a long, long stretch of time, and, you know, the fact that you’ve donated so much of your time over the years certainly exemplifies civic engagement and just the, like I said, the amount of time. It’s, I think, one of those unheralded types of functions, but it’s the, kind of the mechanics of elections that are so important, that I appreciate your efforts.
Well, we’d like to present you with a certificate of appreciation, as well as a token. Just for you, so I want to read this actually for you. The certificate of appreciation presented to Priscilla R. Ward in grateful recognition for your outstanding contributions, exceptional performance, and dedicated commitment to the highest standards of excellence as a member and past chairman of the Board of Registers. Your character and leadership are exemplified by the work and dedication you have unselfishly provided to the town and its citizens. So thank you so very much. Okay. Take us another one. Yeah, we’re going to do a quick group picture. You can stay right there, and we’ll come around. Go ahead. Is it your name? Oh, very nice. Good. Great. Yeah, we’ll open this up for you. Very nice. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next on our appointments, we have recognition of Michael Sorrentino as a member of the Planning Board. Mr. Sorrentino, the mic is yours. Would you like to say a few words?
Nicely.
I don’t know, I think I’ve said a few words over the years. Anything I’ll say is, Planning Board and Planning Director and Town Engineer, all excellent people, and you’re in good hands.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I certainly want to extend my appreciation to Mike for his time on the Planning Board. He was first appointed in May of 1999, and not all that long later, in 2002, took on the role as Chair and has remained Chair for all those years, and has really provided a steady hand in terms of guiding the Planning Board. You know, it’s always, in my estimation, challenging when you’re on a board that is influencing how people can use their property, because everybody, you know, invests a lot of money in their property, and they want to do what they think they should with their property. Sometimes they can’t always do what they hope they can do, and it can be a challenging position to be in on a board like that, but I think Mike has been able to, you know, lead the group there and also offer advice to the newer members as they’ve come on. And just want to thank you for your service to the town and your guidance over the years.
Noel. I’ll start down with Judy.
I would just like to congratulate you and thank you for your years of service. We don’t know each other well, but we’ve traveled in the same circles for a period of time, and I can say that I have come to appreciate your ability to stand up in a room and relay information that you’re not necessarily the most popular person in the room in doing so. And you’ve been able to do it and keep your composure and to have factual data to support why you’re conveying a certain message, whether you’re doing it on behalf of the Planning Board or doing it as a citizen, and that is something that comes with experience. It certainly is, speaks to your ability to communicate. Just this past town meeting, for example, you had to deliver some information that, you know, certainly things didn’t necessarily go your way, but you held your head high and you went through the process, and you did what you thought was right, and you represented your, you know, Board to the best of your ability. And I think that that’s a talent and a gift that you have, and you should be commended for that. So just want to say thank you very much. I appreciate you coming in here tonight. I wish you well in your future endeavors. Hopefully, you’re going to spend some relaxing time, and I think it really bears repeating that you provided the service to the town as a volunteer. You were not compensated, as are your other Board members, are not compensated to spend hours on end. It’s difficult to tell people no and do so with professionalism and decorum, and you and your team have managed to do that. So thank you very, very much, and again, thank you for your years of service.
Thank you for the kind words.
You don’t have the easiest job being on the Planning Board. I know myself from one incident where I came in and tried to get something on my property, and you were adamant about denying it. But you did it with class. You didn’t, I never felt insulted, degraded, sitting in on some of your hearings. There’s one thing I would say is that you were open and honest. You would look at the law, look at the regulation, and you would interpret it the way you should. And I do congratulate you for all your years of service and wish you nothing but best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Sorrentino, thanks so much for your service. Congratulations on your retirement, and I too appreciate all the hard work. I’ll admit that I’ve spent a lot of time watching the Planning Board on TV, especially in the year that I was Chair, I watched a lot. And I’ll admit to this now, but sometimes when I’m up here, I’m awfully nervous, and I’d say to myself, how the heck does he do that? You know, he always looks so confident, whether the room was packed full of people, angry, mad, or if the room was completely empty, he always seemed to have a really good command of the room. And so I just spent a lot of time that year and, you know, the last couple of years watching that, thinking, I wish I could do that, but I don’t have that confidence just yet, but I really appreciate you kind of setting the tone for other people who are up here volunteering and other committees, and I think you’ve always done it the right way, whether, like some of my colleagues said, it was popular opinion or not. And so I really appreciate that and wish you well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have, my colleagues have pretty much said it all. Twenty-three years, for 23 years of volunteering for the Town of Wilmington, that just, you know, it’s outstanding. Not too many people have that type of dedication and commitment as you do, and I’m sure that you’ll be around if needed for advice. But I got to tell you, I enjoy watching you on TV and at town meetings, because you speak your mind and you speak on behalf of the town. The decisions that you make are those that, for the betterment of the town, and that’s what’s most important, I think, and that’s what we’re going to miss in you not being there anymore. But really, the town thanks you, we all thank you for 23 years of dedicated service, and now you can relax a little bit every, every so often when you had your meetings. But I’ll bet you, you’re going to be watching those meetings, though. But that’s my guess. But thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to say what Greg and Kevin said about watching you. You know, I did the same. I like to watch them, and I agree. I, sometimes, you know, when it’s going back and forth, it’s really kind of seat, edge of your seat type of thing, you know, sometimes, but you do handle yourself really, really well, and you’re never flustered or anything, so it’s pretty admirable, the way you handle yourself, so I appreciate that. But like my colleagues here said, it’s 23 years of volunteer service on a board that obviously, as Mr. Hell pointed out, you know, you’re dealing with people’s properties, you know, that they put a lot of money into in keeping them straight on what they can and cannot do. But just congratulations and thank you, and you will be missed. And again, you two are another, you know, shining example of volunteerism in this town and doing what you can to keep it a good place to be. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you. I would like to say that one thing that I appreciated over the 23 years, that the Board never really interfered, Jeff never interfered, the previous town manager never interfered. If we needed anything, they always said if we needed anything, they were there to give it. So I appreciate that fact, that it worked the way it was supposed to. And I just hope the town has the vision to do the right thing moving forward. Kind of wish I said a few more things at that last town meeting, but it’s true, Greg, I do get nervous, too. A lot of times at a town meeting, I think I left a lot on the table. When I go home, I always, geez, I wish I said that. So I’m sure you feel the same way. All yous feel the same. But I appreciate the kind words. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a certificate of appreciation for you as well. I’m just going to walk around since we’re going to do that anyway. Come on up here.
We won’t ask you for your name and address as you come up.
Yes. So a certificate of appreciation presented to Michael A. Sorrentino in grateful recognition of your outstanding contributions, exceptional performance, and dedicated commitment to the highest standards of excellence as a member of the Chairman, member and Chairman of the Wilmington Planning Board. Your character and leadership are exemplified by the work and dedication you have unselfishly provided to the town and its citizens. So we thank you. Congratulations, and...
Yeah.
...Town of Wilmington. Thank you. We have a picture here. Best of luck. Thank you. Okay. All right, next on our appointments, Karen Campbell, Recreation Director regarding the status on lifeguard recruitment. Welcome, Karen. Good evening.
Hello. I know that it came up at your last meeting, that you were asking a little update. It’s okay, Greg. So I’m delighted to fill you in on all things lifeguard right now. So as you know, it is right now a challenge nationally, statewide, and locally to find lifeguards. There’s two primary reasons, in my opinion. One is that the pool of high school and college kids that are looking for positions has shrunk. A lot of kids are not looking for jobs for summertime, and the other reason is that during COVID, every pool and lake and pond shut down, and there were no options for certifications. So we kind of lost a couple of years of people coming up and around. So right now, for this summer, we have Andrea Gillis returning as our beach supervisor, which I’m delighted about. She does such an amazing job. This will be her eighth year with us, and we right now have six certified guards that are returning from last year. That gives us a total of seven, a good complement to the beach. I would love to operate with 15 guards, maybe up to 18 I would find positions for if I had that kind of numbers. Last summer, we operated with just 11. Last summer was kind of interesting, because I don’t know if you remember, but it was a horrible, horrible weather summer. It was cold and rainy, and to the point that we actually shut down the beach several days because it was cold, usually in July. It’s still warm, so there’s people that hang around and want to go to the beach, but there were days that nobody was going to the beach. And we also had a very large resident goose family living at the beach, and by the end of July, they had kind of done their job really, really well, and we had to close because of water safety issues. So while we operated with 11 guards, it was touch and go for a little bit, very tough on really busy days. The beach has to have a ratio of 15, for a guard for every 15 people in the water in order for us to meet Red Cross safety standards. So a lot of times, people look at, you know, the beach, and it doesn’t look that busy, but we may need to have three guards down at the water if we have, you know, 30 kids in the water or adults, whatever. And a lot of times, people don’t understand that, and they think that if three people leave the beach, they, that we should allow three more people in if we have a little line, and it doesn’t work that way. It’s all according to how many in the water. And Andrea does just a great job of scheduling and trying to predict based on weather and time of year and weekend versus... had kind of done their job really, really well, and we had to close because of water safety issues. So, while we operated with eleven guards, it was touch and go for a little bit, very tough on really busy days. The beach has to have a ratio of fifteen, for a guard for every fifteen people in the water, in order for us to meet Red Cross safety standards. So, a lot of times, people look at, you know, the beach, and it doesn't look that busy, but we may need to have three guards down at the water if we have, you know, thirty kids in the water, or adults, whatever. And a lot of times, people don't understand that, and they think that if three people leave the beach, they, that we should allow three more people in if we have a little line, and it doesn't work that way. It's all according to how many in the water. And Andrea does just a great job of scheduling and trying to predict based on weather and time of year and weekend versus weekday population. But, so anyway, we're not there yet, but I am slightly optimistic. The other thing we're seeing across the board is that nobody wants to plan anymore. So, calendars seem to have gone away, and we know that a lot of kids aren't even beginning to think about what they want to do this summer. So, we have been trying to get word out. We have set up a new certification course that we'll be holding at the lake. Andrea will be running it. We're trying to market that, and we're having a little success in getting some bites and nibbles of people. So, we did just open the position for a gate attendant, and we're getting response to that. So, people are starting to think about things. So, I'm a little optimistic that we'll get closer, and we won't have to do anything drastic. Lifeguard shifts are usually about four to six hours, and the lifeguards have to rotate every half an hour. You can't have somebody on the water scanning the water for longer than half an hour. It's just too exhausting and it's too dangerous to assume that they can be alert for longer than that. So, then they come off. When they're off of the water, they're picking up trash, they're cleaning the bathhouse, they're helping at the gate if we don't have gate attendants at that time, and then they rotate back. So, it's pretty much half hour on, half hour off. I'm gonna read this a little bit because I want to tell you all the places we have gone to to try to get guards. We began advertising in January by posting here in Town Hall and on the town website, on Facebook and the daily Apple, and on the employment page for Mass, Parks, and Rec Association. We have been in touch with the high school athletic director and the swim team coach of the high school, hoping that those kids would be interested in working with us. We've contacted area pools that run certification classes, including Burbank and Lowell YMCA's, St. John's Prep, and Shawshank Tech, of course. We talk, I talk frequently with the tech. We worked with an instructor to provide a class at the tech over April vacation, and that didn't work out, but anybody that was interested did get information for certifications. So, nobody was turned away. We are re-advertising the position every four to six weeks. I'm not sure how many jobs do that, but you might see every four to six weeks, it comes out again in the Apple and again on Facebook. And so, we're trying to push. And we also include a blurb in all of our newsletters from winter, spring, and summer. So, that has been included. And we are also working with area rec departments that have beaches and pools, and we're doing like aquatics grouping, and that was really helpful. It developed during COVID so that we could all figure out how we were gonna handle trying to operate with COVID protocols. And now, we're still meeting, and everybody's talking mostly about how to get guards, how to what, how to get people certified. Brett Sawan, who was here two weeks ago as my program coordinator, and he was at a health fair last week and was trying to recruit there. He talked to a couple of kids. We have an adult swim club that swims at the lake every summer, and I have approached them because they have 200 members, and I figure swim club adults should have swim club children, anybody that might have any kind of relationship with the water. And I have even gone back to guards that said they weren't gonna come back this year and asked them if they weren't really sure. Maybe they could fill in some weekends or something. So, we have signs at our office, and at this point, I feel like a lot of our residents see me and say, "Got your guards yet?" So, hopefully, people are aware that this is a problem. We are really trying very hard to meet the need and to recruit. But as I say, it is early May, and I'm very hopeful that by early June, we'll have had some more response to our situation and to our postings, and try to get some people in. And I did have somebody that just signed up for our certification today. We had somebody else that's going to certify that worked for us years past and is coming back. So, if we can get, you know, a handful more, we're gonna be in good shape. That being said, what happens if we don't get enough guards? I hate to even entertain it. The town of Bilricka just approached me last week and said that they are considering opening Swim at Your Own Risk, and what did I think of that? I think that's probably the worst idea in the world. I can't imagine having our beautiful beach, have people just have the run of it. I know how hard our guards have to work to have people pick up their trash and be safe in the water. And if there were unaccompanied people, I think we would have real issues. So, I think the realistic approach would be to limit our open hours. Right now, we're open ten to six every day. Maybe we would have to fall back to eleven to five, something like that, and try to figure out, you know, what's the most popular times to go. I know that's not gonna help everybody, but at least we could try to do the best for most people. There are facilities in the area that are closing, you know, Mondays and Tuesdays, something like that. Different towns are trying different things. The town of Framingham has said that they are absolutely sure they're not gonna get enough guards to run all three of their water properties, so they're shutting down one. So, different approaches are being taken. This is all hypothetical, but just to give you a heads up of what it could look like, I'm really hoping that we don't have any of these things and that we can really talk to some kids and get more guards. And the fact that we now have gate attendants, that has really helped because there are fewer jobs for the guards to do. That's taken some of the onus off of the guards. So, trying to be as creative as possible. We're trying to come up with as many ideas, and we're trying our best to make this work. We do love the beach.
Yeah. Well, my goodness, thank you for all the work you're putting in. I do think you have all the bases covered. I don't know what more you could do, and it's great that you have a whole network with other towns and the swim club and all those different people that you can really, you know, try and figure out and get the word out. What is the criteria to become? Like, what are the certain age?
Oh, that's a great question. And that brings up a great point. They, kids or anybody can be, has to be at least sixteen to work for the town, and you have to have a lifeguard certification. Certifications are good for two years, and then what we have also started doing is free recertifications. So, once our guards have worked for us for the two years, we'll do the recertification for free in order to encourage them to come back. A lot of times, people say, "Oh, my goodness, you know, the town doesn't pay well." I would just, I'm glad you're all sitting down, but our lifeguards all start at $16.25 an hour. And if you all think back to what you started at when you were sixteen years old, you're probably more like me. I think that's a pretty good rate. Guards that have some, a couple of years of seniority and are showing some leadership abilities start at 18.25 an hour. So, I would love to disabuse people of that notion, that it's not a well-paid job. And, you know, it's a beautiful place to work. It's outdoors. You're with some really nice people. It's supervised, and, you know, it used to be the best gig in town. I'm so very sad that it's not. We used to have them lined up that people wanted to work at the beach. It's just not the case right now.
Hopefully, we'll get back there.
That would be great.
You're definitely doing everything possible, and I appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you so much.
So, thank you. We'll start down here, yeah?
Thank you so much. Karen, thanks so much. Never any doubt in my mind that all these things are going on. I hope this helps that we're able to bring this conversation up again, and I hope it'll get great coverage here tonight. Just you being on the agenda, I'm sure will get people to tune in. Always so pleasant, always so glad to have you here. So, I appreciate you and your team, all the work you're doing. And again, whatever we can do to help highlight this, I hope this, just this meeting alone helps you in your efforts. And a couple of weeks away, I hope we'll all be able to enjoy the beach and no problems. So, best of luck, and really, thank you so much for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, I echo Mr. Bendel's comments. Just a quick question, I may have missed it. When do you anticipate the opening?
June 11th until, not April, August 8th is the season that we anticipate for this year.
June 11th. So, you're coming up on it pretty quickly.
Yeah, it's coming.
How about days that you're open? You just closed on a Sunday, open six days, five days? How's that?
We are open seven days, and so, that's our hope to continue. If we did have to be closed on a day or something, a day or two, we would certainly pick the least busy days, which would typically be Monday, Tuesday.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I think you're covering everything. I mean, I don't know what much more you can do than what you're doing here. So, thank you for what you're doing.
I think it's all been said. I appreciate, some of the questions were answered in terms of the age and what was required, and I was curious about what the rate was, and you've articulated that. So, thank you. Not to spot you, but just as a follow-up set of questions is, what do you, what do you think it is? Do you think it's COVID? I mean, I sense that there was some issues even prior to COVID. Could it be the fact that 611 to 88, respectfully stated, is an extended period of time, and to, you know, compartmentalize employment for that subset is challenging to get someone to commit to that? Is that part of the problem?
That's part. I do have, you know, one person that's coming back, but they can't start till the end of June, and another person that is going to come back, but they have to leave July 9th because they have other opportunities. You know, some of these kids have fabulous internship opportunities, things like that, that weren't available before. But, you know, a lot of kids, they just, they're not looking to work in the summer, and that's a whole new thing to me.
No, understood. I mean, you literally have hit every single possible. When I, I read the whole letter, but then when I, I liked the joke at the end, but I'll leave that out. I'll let you share that. And so, but anything that I would have thought of is already here, so that's a credit to you and your team. So, thank you. Putting 16.25 in context, is that competitive compared to other places?
Yes, because we're in that group of other area rec departments, we do salary surveys all the time, and we are right in the sweet spot of salary. We're probably at like two-thirds, you know, a little above many, and we, you know, there are days that we have to call off our guards if it's bad weather and they don't get paid. But our experience is that that's not a problem right now, unfortunately.
Okay. So, not to get myself in trouble, but it's under that whole suggestion thing, and I just, you know, have, would, and I know budgets are limited, but you know, would a sign-on bonus of any kind be enticing, or do you think that that's not warranted? It's just gonna be what it's gonna be?
I think it is what it is, unfortunately. The, Boston is really struggling, and they need to hire something like 300 guards, and they're doing all kinds of things, and they're paying, trying to pay over $20 an hour, and they're still not getting guards. But regionally, we're all around the exact same place, and I think the, hopefully, the free recertification, because that can be a 300, $350 course. That should be appealing to many guards, and...
Well, I think time will tell. Like you said, you're doing all the work. So, thank you for that. I just wanted to walk it through with a couple of questions. So, thank you.
If you come up with anything else, I'm all ears.
It looked, it looks like you're, you have, last my colleagues have said, you've touched all the bases. I can understand in economic downtimes where more and more kids wouldn't want to be out to work. My father would have given me a swift kick in the butt if I wasn't out there, as soon as school was over and had a job. But times have changed. I, I'm sitting here dumbfounded that you haven't got student, students especially, or younger people in general, just simply because it's a short gig, make some money, and go home and laugh. I don't know what to say other than I'll look you all in the eye right now and say, "If you need a job, get in contact." And I wish you luck.
Thank you so much.
Susan? Yeah, I'd just like to add one thing, and maybe you can mention this, being a mom of a lifeguard who went through this process
Yes.
and a pool supervisor now. Maybe you can speak a little to the parent of the child that's just starting out, because I think sometimes with the kids, the hesitation of this being a very responsible job, it's very serious. We want safety to be primary. And I certainly chose, you know, carefully, you know, my kids, what jobs they were gonna be able to apply for, and they had to do a lot of training for this one. But I think that the presence of other people who are experienced is important to kind of say to the parents that are listening today, that there are responsible people on site, you know, emergency responses prepared and ready to come, you know, should there be any incidents. I'm sure that might be hesitation for some people, and it might be worth mentioning.
Yeah, that's a really good point, Susan. Thank you. We do have an adult supervisor, which is great. We also have senior guards that are there in her absence. We have just promoted one guard to assistant beach supervisor that's been working for us for six years now. So, we do have a lot of depth of experience that are there to help any new guards. They are certainly never there by themselves, responsible for all the lives on the beach. While we take it very, very seriously, we do make sure it's a very safe work environment, and we have a great team over there. So, thank you.
Yeah.
It's a really good point, and our, everybody knows our police and fire are second to none. They are always there in a heartbeat whenever they're needed.
You know, it's, I think it's all been said. Certainly, Karen and her staff have really gone to all ends to try to come up with ways to encourage folks to sign on. You know, I would just encourage anyone who may be out there listening that, you know, this is a great opportunity for a responsible job, a well-paying job, and we encourage you to stop in and talk to Karen, or Brett, or Marilyn.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for coming in. This was very informative. We appreciate it. Best of luck.
Thank you so much.
If you come up with any ideas, we'll share.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you.
If you could all have your kids start swimming and swimming.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Okay. Last under appointment is the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. So, it is time to elect a new chair for the next year, which means that my reign has come to an end this year, I think. But I just wanted to say a few words before we get into that. So, you know, last year, when I was elected to the Board of Selectmen, you know, I was, you know, humbled by the confidence and trust given to me by as this town, you know, giving me a chance to help lead. And this was the first time I've ever been elected to a position in government, and what that came about, learning to do, which I was ready for. I didn't expect to be elected chair in my inaugural year. So, while I was happy to take on the role, it presented an even larger learning curve for me, you know, learn to be select woman and chair at the same time. So, I'm not sure it's ever happened in this town's history before, but if not, I'm glad to be the first. Hey, you know, leaving my mark. But, you know, I did my best to learn the ropes, and I do want to thank each and every one of you for your patience with me, as I've learned to, you know, be a select person in, you know, my role in chair. So, I truly mean that. So, thank you. You've all guided me and helped me and been patient, Jeff especially. Thank you, our phone calls and questions and all that stuff. So, thank you all. And I'm looking forward to my continued work on the board with our community and residents. And, you know, I can't wait to see what's in store with this board. And, you know, I look forward to perhaps chairing it again. But with that said, I would like to recommend Gary to be the next chair of this board. And that honestly comes from, he is the only member of this board, and I know, Judy, you're new to this now, but before, that hasn't been chair. And I just think it would be good to give him the opportunity. It's just my recommendation. I'm absolutely gonna open this up to my colleagues here for discussion. And if I, in learning, went on a term with everything I just did, if Jeff, you have to add something here, please do, or I'll just open up to my colleagues, and we'll have a discussion about it. Anyone? So, I guess I'm gonna open it up to you, Gary. Is this something that you would be interested in taking?
I would, I would accept if my colleagues vote for me. I would accept it and work as hard and as diligent as I can in the position.
Okay. So, any discussion?
So, you would need a second for the motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion for Gary DePalma to become the chair of the board beginning this evening for a one-year term. If I have a sec, I'll make that motion if I get a second.
I'll second if a discussion?
Yeah, discussion. Okay. All in favor? All opposed? I don't know what, I said discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, discussion.
Well, thank you for your service.
Okay, go ahead, whatever, yeah.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
I didn't know if there's anybody else who wants to...
Yeah, yeah, that's like I said, don't, I'm new at this still. So, please, if anybody else would like to offer themselves up, by all means. I told you, I'm being totally transparent here. You know, Gary is the only one who has not had the opportunity to do it, and that is honestly where I'm coming from. I just thought it would be a good opportunity. I know I found it a huge help in learning, because on the other side of it, as much as I wasn't prepared for it and was learning, it also gave me a little bit of a head start, if you will, into what goes on being chair and the stuff that the chairperson is involved in that the rest of the board is not, you know, involved in at that time. But I respect everybody's opinion here. It's definitely up to discussion. So, if anybody else would like to throw in their hat or recommend somebody else, please do.
Well, I'll recommend Judy O'Connell. This is no reflection on you, Gary, and it doesn't matter whether someone's a chairman or not a chairman. Everybody gets one vote, you know?
Yeah.
There's five of us, and there are five votes.
Right.
Judy is without a doubt one of the best leaders that I've ever worked with. She was chair when I was on the member of the Board of Selectmen. She has championed the fight for the MBTA. You know, this is, this is my gut. You know, I think Judy is the best person to steer this board at this particular time. So, I would nominate her to this position.
Okay.
I'll second that nomination. You know, certainly can't go wrong with either person that's been nominated. I'll put it out there right now. I have no interest in being chair going forward this coming year, and I think either of these two candidates would be phenomenal. But I echo what Kevin said. You know, I've really been impressed with the time that I've worked with Judy prior and also this time. And equally, all my colleagues, this is always kind of an awkward evening.
No, it isn't.
Having gone through it a couple of times.
Yep.
Becoming the chair, leaving the chair, and in between. But I think anybody at this table would do a really nice job, obviously. But I'll second that nomination.
Open it up to the two of you.
Thank you for that nomination. I too would accept. Certainly want to express that I want to be a team player with everyone, and I'll work with whoever's in that role. But certainly, if I'm being nominated, I would certainly accept that nomination.
And I will add, my nomination, I told you, is it's absolutely no disrespect to anybody else either. Gary, if you want to say if you have anything to add?
Other than, you know, I would accept the role, and I thank you very much for nominating me. If not elected, I can work with anyone. I think I've shown that when I need to be a team player, I can be a team player. I will never walk away from voicing my opinion, right or wrong. I have an opinion, and I will voice it. So, that's basically what I have to say. Thank you for nominating me.
So, do we just do a vote then? Just asking how this, just to show a hands for Gary and then a show of hands for Judy? Is that what we do? Or, I just want to make sure we do this the right way.
Well, I think the first nomination was for Selectman DePalmer.
Yep.
So, the motion, there was a motion and a second, and I don't know that there was a majority vote. So, I guess in the absence of that, you go to your next nomination, which would be Selectman O'Connell.
Okay. So, there's a motion on the table for Judy O'Connell to be chairman. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor? So, it's a 3-2, and congratulations, Judy. You are the new chairman.
Thank you.
Come on down.
Do I move down here?
Yeah, no worries.
You can stay where you are.
Okay.
So, before I get started, I just want to say to you, thank you for your leadership. Obviously, this is a difficult transition when you do these in public session, and it's obviously, you know, it's nice when it's unanimous. Sometimes it's not. I've been in situations where it's gone a multitude of different ways. But I just want to say, as the new chair of the board, I am excited about this task. I want to say that my door is open to all of you at any time. If you need to reach me or you want to discuss anything, I'm more than willing to talk with you seven days a week, 24/7. I've spoken with many of you about a myriad of different things while respecting the open meeting law. I feel confident that I'll work well with Jeff and his team and Bev. And if there's anything that you need from me as the new chair, please don't hesitate to ask me if you want something to be considered as an agenda item. My door is always open to listen to those thoughts and opinions. So, with that being said, we can just resume now to communications, and I'll turn it back over to the manager.
So, the first item under communications is a memo from Selectman Pyro regarding an update to the Town Hall School Admin Building Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. The school and town building committee met on May 4th to resume discussions about the building layout and location of the building on schools, at the school street site. Phil O'Brien, the lead architect from Johnson Roberts, noted that the current programmatic plan removed space for the Public Works Administration and added more space for the school administration. That was something that was talked about, whether the Public Works Department wanted to move their offices to the new town hall in the school administration building. The committee had provided this direction at the last meeting during the building and design, and that was all discussed. The total amount of the building with the adjustments is about 43,000 square feet. In response to a question as to whether the veteran services should be included or would be included, the town manager did speak to Lou Simaglia, the Veteran Services Director, and the preference was to remain at the former West Schoolhouse. In response to a question about the building's ability to accommodate future growth, Mr. O'Brien noted that there is a flexible space in the current layout as it pertains to storage and the repurposing that storage into office space. Also, he talked about as time progresses and there's less need for paper, that will open up some storage area for more flexibility and expansion if needed. And there's also the possibility that we can go outside the footprint of the building as it exists. And the committee voted to accept the existing layout, recognizing that they will continue to tweak the schematic design as it moves forward. A map of the results of the wetland survey, there's some wetlands property there, and we had a botanist come in and check it out. And what was discovered was that there's an intermittent stream that runs down the hill to the paved parking area. It appears that the stream only runs during certain times of the year, but must be facted in to the location of the building. So, multiple site options were presented, including previously discussed siting along Middlesex Ave, and options with the building to the rear of the parking lot up against the embankment. The building remains either 25 or 50 feet away from the flagged intermittent stream, so that's a positive. One option previously suggested but not offered was to create an L-shaped with part of the building running parallel to School Street and the other part of the building extending parallel along the embankment. This option will be developed for the next meeting, as was suggested by Chairman Hooper, an H-design where we would have one side extending perpendicular to the embankment, and that would be the school administration. And then the opposite side, or the second side, would run perpendicular to the embankment, and that would be for the town administration. And in between both of those two buildings, so to speak, would be the area of the conference rooms and the meeting rooms for us, you know, and also the WCTV. So, those will be developed at our next meeting. And we also asked the designer to look into the building on Middlesex Ave, which would take up a portion of the swaying green. We all know how important the swaying green is, but we also want to be aware that we want a building that's not so oversized. So, we're looking at all aspects to this particular piece of property. Dan Pallotta, the OPM, or the owner's project manager, expects to get out another issue or a newsletter within a few weeks. He's also suggesting that a community forum take place in June to encourage the input of the public about where the existing layout of the building should be placed.
So, next under correspondence is a memo from me with regard to the latest update on rail crossing safety issues. The most recent Zoom session took place with Mike Muller, Executive Director of Engineering and Maintenance, along with members of his team from the MBTA, took place on April 27th. The MBTA has submitted information to the Federal Transit Administration about the location of a proposed new platform at North Wilmington Station. You'll recall, a couple of years ago, this was part of an effort made by the board at the time to increase the ability to reduce the bottleneck at that crossing when the trains were coming through. So, this is still a work in progress. They're awaiting a response from the FTA. With the FTA green light, it would take about 10 months to construct this platform excluding the winter season. Keolis, representative, attended the meeting, provided an update on their efforts with regard to the signals and crossing arms. They've repaired nine of the 11 signals at the crossings in Wilmington. They're working on Glen Road and the Salem Street crossings. Work to replace a section of track in the ballast of the crushed stone material under the tracks has been completed at four of the crossings and partially completed at Concord Street, Middlesex, Kilmonic, Woburn Street, and the former Sweetheart Rail Crossing. Work remains to install air conditioning units in their so-called bungalows, or these are the sheds that you see at the crossings, which contain all their electronic circuitry, and it's important, particularly obviously during the summer, to maintain proper air temperature. Selectman O'Connell noted that the culvert project that was talked about at a prior Selectman's meeting is going to be happening at Lubbers Brook, and there are going to be traffic impacts. And she advised members of the Keolis and MBTA team about that. We're having Paul Looney be in touch with their representative at the T. And then also, discussion took place about providing data for going forward for the irregular crossing arm activity, which has generated calls to the T. The thought being with the efforts that are in place, we want to have some metrics to see to what measure these steps are being successful. So, our next session is scheduled for this coming Wednesday. Next is a memo from me to the board regarding the status of munis. I'm pleased to say that through the efforts of Brian Perry, the Finance Director and Town Accountant, along with Beth Lullamon, that the accounts payable portion of the project went live on Monday. Departments are now entering invoices through this new software. These invoices are all done, inputted electronically. The department head signs off electronically, and they go to accounting. Want to, in particular, just acknowledge Beth Lullamon's efforts. She's been instrumental in really providing the training for all the various, not only department heads, but clerical staff who are responsible for inputting this information. Payroll is going to be the next slated transition, followed by accounts receivable in the assessing Next is a communication from Roberta Rune, Chief Counsel, Office of the General Counsel, with regard to the Division of Housing and Housing Development. This is with respect to our subsidized housing inventory. The notice is basically advising us that we have until June 4th to review our SHI numbers and to confirm the numbers. Valerie Gingrich is working on this and will review and make sure that our information is accurate. I would note that the correspondence also advises that the information that is currently in place for Wilmington references the 2020 census. Obviously, as soon as they get the 2020 census from the Census Bureau, that information will be incorporated. Next is a correspondence from Governor Charlie Baker and Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito with regard to the Winter Recovery Assistance Program. This is supplemental money that is being made available to municipalities. In Wilmington's case, we're receiving $322,055.27. It's in recognition of the tough winter and the impact it had on some of our infrastructure. I've had conversations with Mike Woods and Jamie McGoldy. Our plan is to use these funds for repaving Fordham Road. This Fordham Road has been on the docket now for a few years. It's, as you know, a very wide road. It's about 50 feet across and goes from Concord Street back to the Shriners. The cost to repave that will be right around $340,000. So, we will supplement with Chapter 90, but this will be helpful for that purpose. I have a memo from Jamie McGoldy, the Operations Manager, with regard to the town's vegetation management program. It's a notice of our intention to spray herbicides within the town along our right-of-ways. This is part of a five-year vegetation management plan and a yearly operations plan. It's on the town's website and available in hard copy. The herbicides being used are registered with EPA, Mass Pesticides Bureau, and the Mass DEP. The spraying will take place between June 1st and October 1st. The exact time will depend upon weather and the field crews availability. Next is the memo from Karen Campbell, Rec Director, with regard to lifeguards, which she went over earlier. We have a letter from Christopher Alphen, Esquire, from Blatman, Barowski, Haverty, and Silverstein LLC, the attorneys representing the 100 West Street LLC project. You'll recall that the applicant has submitted an affordable housing comprehensive permit submitted on the 22nd of April. The requirement is the Board of Appeals has to conduct the hearing beginning no later than 30 days from receipt. They did grant an extension to the Board of Appeals to May 25th, and as a consequence, the first, the hearing will begin on May 25th at 7:00 PM. Next is a letter from Dan Lamb, actually, I'm sorry, a letter from John Bushway, Committee Chair, the Boy Scouts Troop 322, recognition... Chair, the Boy Scouts Troop 322, recognition of Cyrus Paul Rich, achievement of Eagle Scout. This, I'll have a letter for the board to sign at your next meeting. You may recall, this young gentleman pursuing his Eagle Scout did some work for us at the Harndon Tavern, so we'll have something for the board to sign at your next meeting. Then we have a letter from Dan Lamb, Arbor Day Foundation. Once again, Wilmington has received or retained its designation as Tree City through our efforts to promote spreading, promoting trees and all the good things that come with that. I just want to extend my thanks to Mike Woods and Jamie McGoldy, and certainly our Public Works folks for all the plantings they do on public property, and also for the library for spreading the word. All right, under Board to Consider, we have the executing of an access agreement for the, with the Mass. Department of Transportation to conduct soil borings relative to the Route 38 Bridge Project. This has been on the docket here for some time, but essentially, the Mass. DOT, as you recall, is going to be replacing the existing bridge that extends over the MBTA tracks. It's a $9.6 million project slated to begin in the summer of 2023. Prior to actually finalizing the design, they need to do some soil borings, and Town Council has reviewed the access agreement and is okay with it.
Question, if I may, based on the Geotactical Engineer, GZA, have we used them previously, or is this a new relationship?
This company is hired by Mass. DOT.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay.
And this, Madam Chair, this also includes Jeff, the Butters Row Bridge replacement as well, right? Is that what I'm reading here?
Well, this, these particular soil borings are just for the bridge at, over the MBTA tracks.
Okay, not Butters Row yet?
No, no.
Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to execute the access agreement.
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Okay, so next is authorizing the Chair of the Board of Selectmen to execute the Mass. Housing Partnership Technical Assistance Application. And this is, is part of the effort with the Board of Appeals reviewing the, or considering the 100 West Street LLC. It's an opportunity to provide them with technical assistance. Mass. Housing provides consulting services valued up to $15,000. So there's a pool of individuals that have expertise in working through these comprehensive permits. With this application, it would allow the town to access one of those individuals who would work with the Board of Appeals and assist them as they work their way through that comprehensive permit.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to that effect. Would anyone like to make that motion?
So moved.
I have a second. Second. Any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
This one is the Chair, I'm sorry. The next one is Board to Consider, signing a deed for the sale of town-owned land located at, on Aldrich Road, MAP 9, Lot 56 pursuant to the affirmative vote on Article 59 at the Annual Town Meeting, May 1st of 2021. This property, you may recall, was put out to bid last year. We received one bid, Michael Fockingham, sold bidder. The property, the price that he put in for this was $25,025. It's a 16,117 square foot piece of property, and the plan, subject to the board's approval, would be to have the closing tomorrow. These funds, you may recall, go into the capital stabilization account.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
And just a question related to other properties, the one on, I think there was a property at Silver Lake, that there was a, is that going to be coming out for bid again?
Yes. Yeah, the plan is, now that with the town meeting's approval of the sale of the other piece of property, we're going to put them out together and just do it all in one shot. Next under Board to Consider is a request of Linda Peters, Principal at the Wilmington High School, on behalf of the Wilmington High School class of 2022, to reuse the Swain Green for the senior barbecue on Thursday, June 2nd, 2022, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
I'd entertain a motion to grant the request?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Next is a request of Jeanette Quirk, Principal at the Wilmington Middle School, to use the Town Common and gazebo on Thursday, June 16th, 2022, 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM for the eighth grade moving on ceremony. Initially, they were looking to require the day before, day after, for setup and breakdown. They were going to be renting a tent and chairs, but the plan has changed, so they will only need it for this particular date. We are providing the chairs, and in the event of inclement weather, they have a permit to use the high school auditorium.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to grant this request?
To grant the request?
Motion's been made. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
The next item was taken up previously, which was the issuing of a Sunday Entertainment License to Cushing Amusement. Brings us to the last Board to Consider, which is modification of the title "Selectmen" following Annual Town Meeting approval. Just to advise the board, based upon conversations with Town Council, he has noted that the, until the Attorney General has authorized the votes taken at town meeting, and ultimately until the legislature has approved the modification to the Town Managers Act, any legal documents, contracts, licenses, leases, would need to retain the Board of Selectmen reference. So certainly, any kind of informal communications, or for example, the agenda here that is posted, it could perhaps, if the board is so inclined, now reference Select Board, but the primary concern at this point is that any legal documents still retain the existing reference.
So in fairness to the board, we certainly can have a discussion on this as it is a Board to Consider item. I would say that if, from my standpoint, I obviously know that it's been voted on by the residents at town meeting to have it changed, but I am cognizant of the legal opinion. So what would be the pleasure of the board? Do you recommend that we consider taking a motion to table this for now to a later date? Or is there any recommendation, you know, from legal as to how we should handle this Board to Consider item?
I would like to see us reference as Select Board and follow through with what the town voted on, and then obviously keep the legal piece as is. It's casual, do you know what I mean? It's just within our confines and in reference. But again, I'll go with majority, but I think, you know, it's been voted on. I think it's going to cause confusion with the residents to wonder why we're still calling, you know, me "Selectmen" as opposed to, you know, "Select Board," so.
So would you like to make a motion to that effect?
I would.
Does anyone get a second for discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second? Second for discussion? Any discussion?
No, I, I think we should keep it as it is at this point in time, referencing "Selectmen" until such time that we get the approval from the Attorney General's office and the approval from the legislative body. You know, I understand, I voted for the switch to "Select Board," but I don't want to start a precedence where all of a sudden, we say we can just take this up now without the approval of the Attorney General's office or, you know, certain state offices. I just, I'm a little leery about jumping the gun on this, so that's my opinion.
Yeah, I too, thank you, I too think we should wait. I know, I just, I obviously respect the wishes of the town meeting vote, you know, just a week ago or so, but I'm also sympathetic to those 50 some odd other articles which we voted on that have to wait till the Attorney General approves them, which are really not going to be able to move forward until that time. So I just think that we're going down a slippery slope of, someone might say, well, my article passed, so I can just take it into effect starting today. So I just make sure we're clear about, make sure we're correct, and so I'm fine with waiting a few more weeks.
Okay, so at this point, we have a motion on the table from Selectman Selly to have the informal change, other than legal documents. It was seconded by Selectman De Palmer. We heard discussion. Does anyone have any further discussion before I call for the vote? So if you're voting in the affirmative, you're voting to modify the name. Is everyone clear on?
Could I just ask a question? So just if this is voted in the affirmative, would the expectation be that it, that stationary, for example, be changed, or just that informally with reference to, for example, the agenda or any other references that are not legal, that that would be the course of action?
I was, to me, it's very informal. I don't think anything should be changed. I just mean, in referencing, I'm not going to call myself a "Select Woman" anymore, is what I'm referencing to. I would rather not, I would, you know what I mean? I'm a member of the Select Board. That's my example, I should say. I don't think anything legal should change, anything formal. It's just informally, in reference, you know, no signs, no posts, things like that, you know? That's why I think it's just casually. I don't see any issue with it, but.
So to further that discussion, you know, and I don't want to be over analytical, but I am about to, is that when I see this Board to Consider modification of title "Selectmen" following Annual Town Meeting approval, you know, I hear what you're saying from an informal perspective. When I talk now in generality, I will say Chair, or I will say Select Board, because I'm starting to get used to using that lingo.
Right.
So I'm already doing that.
Same.
But when I see this on the agenda, I'm seeing it from a more formal standpoint. Am I misreading that? I mean, I don't, I mean.
Yeah, it was just for discussion, really.
So, I mean, I'm going to say Select Board in my wording in general.
Yep.
Regardless of what's written. So if it's that informal, that, I see this as more formal as sum and substance of stationary and documentation. So I didn't set the agenda, so I just wanted to defer to you as the Chair.
No, it was more informal. Jeff and I talked, it was more about discussion for informal, nothing changed, just like you and I already referring, or I don't know if anybody else, but like "Select Board," "Chair," you know? It's more about that, nothing formal until it's passed through legislation.
Right, I was looking to get direction from the board, for example, this agenda going forward, you know, if this is not, well, it is obviously a document for the, in terms of the public records law, it's not a legally binding document, so conceivably, if the board was so inclined, this could be referenced as Select Board. Just trying to get some direction from the board as to whether you want to go in that direction, or simply just refer to yourselves as Select Board, you know, in conversation and otherwise, but not committed to writing yet.
Madam Chair, if I could, maybe perhaps, you know, I think we're having a good discussion here, all good points have been made, so I did wonder if maybe we should consider taking no action, you know? I mean, I think we've had the good discussion, people have made their point of view, but, you know, ultimately, the result isn't going to change here. I mean, we're still going to have to have legal documents, including, in my opinion, the agenda, which could be challenged as a violation of open meeting law by someone, not me, but anyone, and that we, if we prefer to, you know, refer to each other that way, that's totally fine. And eventually, obviously, this will happen. I have no reason to believe the Attorney General's going to deny the town meeting vote when that time comes. You think it's usually in August? So I just offered that as a suggestion, instead of trying to just split hairs. I wonder if, perhaps just to take no action, having had this healthy discussion, might be better.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second, so we, in lieu of not having a rescinded motion, we would need to take the.
I'll rescind the motion. I'll rescind the motion and just, I'll make a motion, take no action.
Okay, so you have made a motion to take no action. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second with discussion?
Yes.
I would recommend that what we do is we table it, meeting to meeting, until the Attorney General makes her recommendation.
Okay.
So just on that, just on that recommendation, I see where you're coming from, Gary, tabling it from meeting to meeting, but we're going to get a letter from the Attorney General's office at some point within the next couple of three months, so that means if you want to table it to meeting to meeting, that means it has to be on every agenda from meeting to meeting. Yeah, I don't think we need to do that, but, because we're going to get, we're going to get a letter.
Table it till the AG's office notifies us of their decision.
Do you want us to take a formal vote on the rescinding of the motion?
I don't know that you need to do that necessarily. I would just point out that it's a two-step process, so the Attorney General will determine, presumably, okay, the action's taken at town meeting, and then the, but the Town Managers Act will still remain as is until a special legislation is filed and then ultimately approved. I've been in touch with Senator Tar's office and will work with our legislative delegation to get special legislation filed. You know, that could take perhaps a year. You know, it depends upon their schedule and how this, you know, if this gets on their docket, so to speak. So I just need to make folks aware of that, that ultimately, in order for this to be in a legal fashion, that it could be used on legal documents, that the legislature needs to weigh in.
Madam Chair, and I would agree with Mr. Hall, and I think we should stay the process. You know, we get the AG's opinion, and then it goes to the legislative body for a vote. Again, I voted in favor of the change, but we have a Town Managers Act that tells us differently at this point in time, and I think we need to follow the way it's presented in, by law, so.
So hearing the discussion up to this point, would anyone like to make a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table. For further notice.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
She took me a motion to no action.
We had no action, and then there was, there was no formal motion for no action. It was that she rescinded. And then it was, there was discussion to take no action, and then there was discussion to table, and the formal motion that I received, to my knowledge, is to take no action, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? At this time, public comments? No public comments. Announcements? I will start to my right. Any announcements on my right? Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you, Lil, and thanks, thanks to all my colleagues, obviously look forward to working with each of you in the coming year. I also want to congratulate another unsung hero, just retired after 14.
I also want to congratulate another unsung hero, just retired after fourteen years with the DPW. Want to congratulate Lindarian on her retirement from the DPW. Thank you for her service. And obviously, looking forward to the Memorial Day festivities that are coming up, so I encourage everybody to, to join us.
Thank you. Any announcements to my left?
No. I just have one, just indicating that I participated today in volunteering with the Special Olympics at the high school. There were, every school was represented in Wilmington. There were a lot of leadership personnel there, public safety, other communities that were there, and it was a great example of volunteerism and the kids were thrilled to be back. They had postponed that event for a couple of years and I thought it was a very, very nice event, very well orchestrated, and the kids had an absolute ball, so.
Great.
Thrilled to report that. Anything under new business?
Yes.
I'd like the town manager to, through you, to ask the Public Health, we accept applications and I believe this Board of Selectmen approves of licenses for the ice cream trucks and so on and so forth.
Right.
I've been seeing a number of ice cream trucks running around Wilmington, stopping it in neighborhoods, and I haven't seen one application brought forward.
We only actually have one.
I have now, and I should have taken, unfortunately, I didn't and I will, because they're there enough. I have seen three different vehicles in different neighborhoods.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'm just concerned with everything that's going on in this world today.
Yeah.
That I prefer to make sure they're licensed.
Right.
One thing I'd like to, to add to is, could we get a update at the next meeting from Shelley, New House Border Health, just with COVID numbers going up and now Middlesex County is in high again? Just curious to see, you know, just, just an update from her, just to see, you know, her advice, just, just high level, whether it be her or just an update through, through town manager.
Sure, I, I, I can certainly speak to her about that. I did, we did have a conversation today. She didn't indicate that the, the numbers are going up, but based upon everything that the Department of Public Health and her colleagues are, are saying at this point, they're, we're not at the point where we need to change any protocols. She's had some conversations with the schools and they're, at the moment anyways, looking to stay the course with regard to masks and so on.
Great.
But I'll, I'll check in with her for, for the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
New business?
Uh, yes.
Oh, you're on announcements though, I'm sorry. New business?
Uh, new business, yes.
Thank you so much. I just wondered through you, Madam Chair, if we could get the, a manager update on where we are with the expenditures on the ARPA funds? You know, have we spent it all? Is there any leftover? You know, I just wonder, you know, in the form of a memo is just fine with me.
Good.
But where we're at in terms of the ARPA funds. And then secondly, I wondered, and we talked about this a year ago at this time, if we should consider through you the, our appointments to committees, including ourselves. Should we take a look at who's serving where and do we want to remain where it is? Do we want to, does anybody want to step aside? Does anybody want to step up? I wondered if we should consider that now, given that we just passed town meeting, and that also includes, I think, some other committees. I think one of the things we learned about last year was that, you know, sometimes that I think we just assume that everybody's okay where they are and maybe we ought to reach out to some of the volunteers and say, you know, how are you doing and do you wish to continue? And if so, I have no intention.
I, I agree with that, yep.
Of disrupting that, other than the fact that I think it's okay that we check in with them from time to time, and I don't know when's a good time, but I thought I might bring it up.
Yeah, no, that's, I think I agree with that, yeah.
I think it's at some point. So that's, that's usual and customary annually, so.
Yep.
I think that's well in line.
Yeah, I, I would agree. Mr. Bennett, just to add to that a little bit, you know, we had a, a meeting of a couple of weeks back where the town manager presented to us various individuals to be put out for a one-year or a three-year term into that position. I think we should look forward in doing that as well. It should be a one-year stint, the Economic Development, the Rink Committee, the Inhabitant Bylaw, the Senior Center, the Town Hall, School Administration. They should all be one-year appointments and then we reach out to those individuals to see if they want to serve, as you said, and and reappoint them if you want, or move on and appoint someone else. I mean, we have people who are on those committees that were appointed by prior selectmen. They, they may not even want to be on there anymore. I, I know that a few appointments I put on, some people, you know, they, they did their time, you know, and they get tired and they, they want a break, so we need to be aware of that. Just to, through you, Madam Chair, is there any update on the Yantile facility bathrooms, how we're approaching that? And then again, I asked a meeting ago about a memo regarding the issue at the high school, and I didn't see it in this particular packet, and I was just wondering if that was coming.
There was an email today. Was it today?
It was an email that was sent out to all of us a few days ago, directly from the chief, and he had basically indicated that he had passed it on to the District Attorney's Office and that their investigation has concluded and that they're limited as to what they can convey to us publicly. He did offer his cell phone for you to be able to contact him directly, but they need to step through this very appropriately, legal-wise, in the fact that it's a school matter. So certainly is available for questions, and he did email the entire board.
Yep.
I, I did see that.
Okay.
If I could just follow up on one thing, just to kind of frame where I'm coming from on the appointments, you know, I think seeing a, a trend of late, you know, last couple of months, last couple of years, we're losing people on committees. We've had a lot of people step aside, for whatever reason, that's totally fine. It's all volunteer work, as we know. But, you know, even I have an appointment to make on the Bylaw Committee that I'm struggling to try to, to appoint someone or nominate somebody to this board. And I just wonder if people are hesitant to get involved because they think, well, jeez, once I get in there, I got to do it for life.
Right, right.
And so if we say to the person, well, you know, it's a one-year appointment and you can reevaluate after a year, that maybe it's more appealing to a volunteer to say, well, you know what, I can do a year.
Yep.
Or I could do, I could do two years, but right now, you know, like I said a year ago, not to be, you know, sarcastic, but you know, these, some of these appointments are like the Supreme Court. They seem to be for life. And I don't know if we should reevaluate that.
Yeah, sorry. I think there's truth to that, just, you know, being on board, you know, do, doing yearly elections on, you know, who's going to be the new chair, off the new, all that stuff, secretary. But I do feel like there's some, you know, am I supposed to, you know, I just think there's no guidance, I guess. But I think that's the, that's a good route to go, just kind of review it every year and just make sure everybody wants to be there and no one feels like they're obligated as, you know?
That, and I think it may, it may attract more people.
It may, yeah, yeah, absolutely, knowing, I agree. Yep.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments that you want to make, Jeff?
So just to be clear, it sounds like what the board is looking for is a list of both the committees that board members serve on, for example, Inhabitant Bylaw Committee, Economic Development, some of the ones that were cited.
Yep.
And so you collectively can make judgments as to whether you wish to continue serving in those roles or switch. And then secondly, you're looking for a list of people that may have been appointed by this current board or previous boards that are serving on some of the committees like Economic Development and Rink Committee and so on, so essentially two categories of lists here and then make some judgments as to whether those individuals that you've appointed, and I presume you'll have conversations with them as to whether they want to continue or.
Well, I was, if I may, in my mind, I was thinking we, we compose a letter to that person saying, thank you for your service, we really appreciate it, and we want to let you know that the Board of Selectmen intend to take up, you know, your reappointment at a future date. If you decide you want to be reappointed, then just let us know. If not, you know, thank you very much, but please let us know, and then on a future date that the chair and the manager set, we could take up, you know, okay, we've got these people want to keep going and, and if not, we have these vacancies to fill. But we kind of, you know, maybe we got a point now, post-election, post-town meeting, where we can, you know, reset and, and figure out who wants to, you know, in the coming year, who wants to be involved and if, where we can identify that. We have, we have a lot of vacancies that I understand of. I know the Bylaw Committee has a vacancy, I believe the Economic Development has a vacancy. You know, there's other vacancies that are escaping me now, but there are certain.
Disabilities.
Commission on, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's a number and, and, you know, maybe a year appointment may be more attractive to somebody, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Let me get this straight. Are you asking for all appointees that the Board of Selectmen is interested with? Thank you. Okay, that's what I was.
Yep. The other ones we already voted on, that the manager appoints, and we went through that list, as Mr. Kyra mentioned earlier, a couple of weeks back. I think I'm specifically talking about the ad hoc committees that we've kind of formed over the last couple of years, all of which are doing, you know, yeoman's work, I think we can all agree. And, and it's just something we ought to, you know, and I don't know how we should do it, but I just wanted to give it as food for thought, and I'm, I'm sure you guys will decide how we want to present this to the boards, but I just put it out there as food for thought tonight for a future meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's all valid points. I, I think the key is, is that you want to get the most and the best out of whatever committee and, you know, if someone's on year five of serving, they might, you know, just not able to make the meetings at the same rate as they once were, or life happens, so I think it's.
Exactly.
Important to, to give people the opportunity to, you know, navigate their, their role appropriately, so.
In fact, yes, I'm sorry, one last point, but all different committees are at different points, you know, you know, I think the Bylaw Committee has done some terrific work and they just got over a big hurdle at town meeting, kind of a big, you know, end of the season, if you will, for lack of a better term, and now they're going to be, you know, perhaps embarking on a new season at a certain point, but, you know, maybe not tomorrow. So maybe it's a good time to say, all right, where do we stand with this committee? Other committees, you know, as Mr. Kyra updated us tonight, Town Hall, School Avenue, you know, they're knee-deep in what they're doing, you know, clearly, the folks who I have the fortune to serve with on the senior committee, they're knee-deep in what they're doing. Economic seems to always be busy, so different committees are at different points.
Well, the thing, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, okay, no.
The thing is, is if you're on a, on a one-year appointment, we should be reappointing every year, not letting it go by the wayside.
Right.
Whether it's a blanket appointment or if we are going to send out letters and inform everyone that their appointment is coming up, they're still interested in it, they send back a, a positive response, then we know, and we can make a blanket appointment of everyone that has sent back responses stating that they want to continue on with that board. If, if our board is willing to accept that, it would be, I'd be, be more efficient, and we can do it at one clear slate. We don't have to worry about it continuously.
I, and I agree. I think this could be a great vote of confidence of somebody who's working.
I, I think it's a great idea.
You know, they don't always get recognized for the volunteer work they're doing, and when this board votes to reappoint them and they get that nice letter, hey, you've been reappointed, or they, you'll see the meeting, whatever.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
It's a nice vote of confidence. Hey, thank you for your service and, you know, whatever, but, you know, so whenever that takes place, maybe it just doesn't happen until the fall, the end of the summer, I don't know, but.
Well, so, just to, just to be clear, so certainly the, the board has certain appointments as was evidenced from last meeting that you make on an annual basis, and those are, you know, those, those are appointments that are, are part of the process that has been, have been done for many years now, and in, in each of those instances, to the extent that anyone is not interested in serving, they will advise us, certainly in, in the cases of people serving on boards, for example, or committees that I'm responsible for, I will reach out to the department head and, and ask them to inquire of those individuals who are coming up for reappointment, are they still interested? And so there's a distinction between those appointments that are typically made at the last meeting in April, and then I think some of these other committees that you've established, the Rink Committee and so on, some of these that are, you know, ad hoc, as was, was noted. I suppose one of the things to consider going forward with regard to, you know, when you're appointing, setting up a committee, is rather than making it a indefinite term, to, to set terms, so if it's a one-year appointment, that way, it, it would seem to me to make sense that if these ad hoc committees to provide some uniformity to it so that, you know, whatever the date is, you, you can name it, whether it's the last week in April with the other appointments or the last week, last meeting in May, whatever it happens to be, but have a point in time where the people on these ad hoc committees are, if, if it's the intention of the board to reevaluate or reconsider, do it uniformly for all those ad hoc committees. Right now, these, as far as I know, the people on the Rink Committee and Economic Development and so on, those appointments were made to indefinite terms.
Yeah, they just keep rolling.
Right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And I agree, and I was going to say the same thing you just said, Mr. Hall. I think we need to look at it in two, two tiers. The first being what you present to us in April, you know, town council, special council, those are year appointments, those are our appointments, but they're presented to us in April to make those appointments. And I think after the election is over, after the changing of the guard, so to speak, we should be doing this at the last meeting in May to reappoint these individuals, because you have a new selectman coming in and their opportunity to appoint someone. So everybody gets a one-year appointment on these particular committees. They can be reappointed, or they, you know, it's a thank you for your, for your service on this committee. And, and then you, you as the Board of Selectmen who appointed them initially can reappoint them. I just, and whether we have to put that in a, in a policy form or not, but I, I think they should be one-year appointments.
Full disclosure, I mean, I've, I've approached a few people on the vacancy that I need to fill or bring to this board for the, for, to the Bylaw Committee, and and every time they say, well, how, okay, what does it entail? I'll give them a little background, they say, well, how long? Well, forever. You know, for lack of a better phrase. I mean, you know, I would like to be able to say to that person, well, it's, it's a year appointment, you know, if you decide a year from now you don't want to volunteer anymore, then the board can reconsider someone else. But I think that might be
Yeah.
more attractive to somebody to say, you know what, I can step up and I can give the next year on a committee, but when you tell me there's no end in sight, then geez, you, I don't know, you know, people, everyone's busy. So I'm just trying to think, you know, we, again.
No, it's a good idea.
Bringing this back to what I said at the beginning, we've had a lot of people leave committees over the last couple of months, last two years or so. Maybe we have to rethink about how we're, how we're trying to attract people to volunteer.
Madam Chair, just to get to Gary's point about there are people missing on the disabilities or the historical or whatever, planning, whatever, that, that I see as different compared to the economic and the rink and the inhabitant, because those committees are permanent committees.
Right, right.
The Rink Committee is going to end sometime. You know, the Economic Development Committee may not sustain itself, and that may end sometime. But those other committees are more permanent and presented by the.
I think it's a valid point, I mean, similar to Yantile.
Right.
I was on that project for four and a half years. I didn't think it was ever going to end. And it's still, we're still talking about it even tonight, and that, that committee disbanded. It was turned over to the Care Custody and Control of the Recreation Department and the Town Managers Office, so that's an example of a, you know, an ad hoc committee that was assembled for a period of time.
Yeah, those are the, I'm sorry, yeah, those are the committees, I agree. Those are the ones that we need to pay attention to with the one year and, yeah.
And we did lose some people on that committee, and Jeff and Kevin would remember, you know, that people just couldn't, they couldn't do four and a half years. They just couldn't do it. And that's fine, so.
Well, that's the thing, excuse me, Madam Chair, for me. That's the thing that we have to look at is, you're sitting on a committee and you get tired.
Mm-hmm.
And you say, I can't go on with this. But you don't know how long your term is.
Right, exactly, yep.
So if we go through them and these are all one-year, okay, let's send letters out, these are one-years. At the end of the year, or near the closing of the year, you can send a letter out saying your year on this committee is coming to a close, however, you know, however you want to phrase it. Are you interested in going forward with this committee or not? Plus, it gives the board a, a better opportunity to, if someone says, no, I can't do it anymore, to be proactive and start looking right away for that replacement. And I agree with Mr. Kyra that some of these committees, you know, they are, they're going to end someday, when? No one knows. But if, even on those committees, if someone wants to, says, I can't take this anymore, you know, I've, I've done two years on the committee and I. you know, I've, I've done two years on the committee, and I, I want to get out, you know, the board knows more. You know, we're more abreast of what's going on with these boards by knowing what the staff is, and by having, having the full list and having it brought forward the end of May, we know where we stand, and then we're not scrambling later on, or getting concerned about different committees that are, are low on personnel. The Disabilities Commission, there's going to be questions coming up very soon, whether they're going to have corps, because people aren't, so then we have problems. And if we know in advance that we're going to have an issue, we can, we can address it quicker. That's the only thing I'm looking at, is that if we do it right, we can do, we can have everything addressed in more smooth transitions.
My final clarification, just to be clear, I don't expect a solution or a definitive at a very next meeting. I just wanted to offer that up, and it may take longer than our next meeting, so please don't feel pressured by my request.
Thank you. Anything else under new business? Moving on to important dates.
Under important dates, we have May 11th, the Senior Center Building Committee, Room Nine, Town Hall, 6:00 P.M. Also on the 11th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 A.M. to 2:00 P.M. May 12th is the Peace Officers Memorial Day Observation, Public Safety Building, 6:00 P.M. May 14 is a brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 A.M. to 4:00 P.M. May 18th is the Town School Administration Building Committee Meeting, Town Hall, Room Nine, 6:00 P.M. May 23rd is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, Town Hall Auditorium, 7:00 P.M. May 25th, Senior Center Building Committee, Town Hall, Room Nine, 6:00 P.M. May 26th, the Economic Development Committee meeting, 6:00 P.M. May 28th is the Declaration of Graves, Wildwood Cemetery, 8:00 A.M. Decoration of Parks, Squares, and Monuments. Also on May 29th is the Rededication of Parks, Squares, and Monuments, Memorial Shrine at St. Thomas Villanova, 1:00 P.M. Veterans Monument at Town Common, 1:15 P.M. Dedication of Flag Poles at Town Common, dedication of Leslie Wick's Monument at Silver Lake, 3:00 P.M. Memorial Day, May 30th, Memorial Day Parade starts at 10:00 A.M. Memorial Day Ceremony, Wildwood Cemetery, Veterans Lot, 11:00 A.M. And then June 2nd is the Shawshank Tech graduation, June 5th is the Wilmington High School graduation, June 12th, Farmer's Market, Town Common Parking Lot, 10:00 A.M. to 1:00 P.M.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Selectmen Bendel to do the salute to service.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, it's my privilege tonight to present a salute to service to somebody who's in the room tonight. And so, for those of you who don't know, Gary Bronigan works for the town, has also served our country, and so we wanted to recognize you tonight. I know we're catching you by surprise, so I apologize. He didn't know this was coming, for those of you watching at home, but we thought it would be nice to honor you tonight for your service. For those of you who don't know, Gary was in the Air Force Apprentice Security Specialist from 1990 to 1993, in the Air National Guard for the state of New Hampshire. He was sent to Lakeland Air Force Base in Texas, where he spent, he went to Security Specialist School. He served out of the Peace Air National Guard Base in New Hampshire for three years, and he earned the National Defense Medal, Air Force Training Ribbon, and the New Hampshire National Guard Ribbon. So in addition to serving the town admirally and working behind the scenes here for us at Town Hall, we want to thank you for your service to our country and to our community. So it's my privilege to present this certificate on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and all of our residents, to Gary for your service. Thank you.
That, that was the best surprise. You had no idea why you were here. Oh, my God, that is so cool. So nice job. Okay, so that concludes our meeting, and at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn? Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second, second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
WCTV, connecting our community.